Welcome. Welcome to City Club of Portland's Friday Forum. I'm Courtney Nelson, President of City Club. For 100 years, City Club of Portland is where civic-minded people come together to make Portland and Oregon a better place for everyone to live, work, and explore. We're gathered here at the Sentinel Hotel along with all of you listening on OPB Radio or viewing on Portland Community Media and YouTube. The generous support of City Club's corporate and media sponsors enables us to put on the state's best civic programs week after week. Our media partner is Oregon Business Magazine. And our current Friday Forum sponsors are Avon Grid Renewables, Airbnb, McKinley Irvin, AARP, and Uber. Please join me in showing our appreciation for our sponsors. And now to today's program. Our Friday Forum today is a debate between candidates for the Multnomah County Commission in Districts 1 and 4. As the primary provider and funder of social services for the region's most vulnerable residents, the conversation will focus on how the county's services and partnerships with other local governments can best advance racial equity and economic opportunity for all. Our debate will be moderated by Kupana Krishnamurthy, the Senior Policy Director at Forward Together. Previously, she served as Field Director at Western State Center, where she was the lead author on Oregon and Nevada's legislative report cards on racial equity. Please join me in welcoming our moderator and candidates to the stage.
Welcome to the last in a series of general election debates hosted by the City Club of Portland this year, including debates that have been with candidates running for governor and Portland City Council. I'm excited to be here today as 2016 marks the 100th anniversary year of hosting thought-provoking conversations just like this one. I'm joined by four candidates for two different seats on the Multnomah County Commission. Sharon Myron and Eric Zimmerman are running in District 1, which includes everything west of the Willamette River and the inner southeast to Caesar Chavez Boulevard. And Amanda Schrader and Lori Stegman are running in District 4, which is on the opposite side of the county and includes the Foster Powell Neighborhood and everything east of 148th Avenue. Before we get started, I'd like to ask that our audience here at the Sentinel refrain from applause during the course of our conversation, but please join me right now in welcoming our candidates to the stage. Now, this could get very confusing because there are four of them. So, we have a very tight format. Each question has a time limit that I will be strictly enforcing. When the candidate has 15 seconds left, I'm going to show you a blue card. And when you need to wrap up, I'll show you a red card. Call-in in the audience will also be mirroring that. I know that here in Oregon, we can have a respectful political discourse and that you will respect these time limits so that all voices can be heard. The candidates have received the opening question in advance as a way to introduce themselves and their vision of the county's work. They have not received any of the other questions. Due to the number of candidates in today's format, we won't have questions at the microphone today, but the questions that I am asking were developed in close collaboration with City Club members. If you're just tuning in on OPB, you are listening to the City Club of Portland's Friday Forum. I'm Kupana Krishnamurthy, the Senior Policy Director at Forward Together, and I'm here with four candidates for the Multnomah County Commission. Sharon Myron and Eric Zimmerman, running in District 1, and Amanda Schrader and Lori Stegman, running in District 4. So our opening question, and we'll start with Eric in District 1, is, "Please tell us what you think the most critical role or responsibility of the county is, and why are you best suited to ensure that the county's mission is carried out effectively?" You have one minute.
Great, thank you. You know, whatever any of us say are the most pressing issues, everything that we do in the next term is going to require leadership and experience to actually deliver on real solutions. I believe that our homeless crisis and our unsheltered who sleep on our streets every night is the number-one issue facing Multnomah County. I also believe that criminal justice reform and looking at the disparities that exist in our jail system and all of our systems within the criminal justice need to be opened up. We have to break that system down that allows disparities in use of force. I am proud to be supported and endorsed by the Portland Tribune because of my experience, because of my plans, and the ability to serve the county overall, but also be the best candidate to serve my constituents in District 1. I look forward to the rest of the conversation, and thank you for being here today.
Thank you, Eric. We'll move to you, Sharon. Why are you the most -- what are the most critical roles and responsibilities of the county, and why are you best suited for this job?
So, the main mission of the county is caring for people who need it most. I'm an ER doctor, and every day I deal with crises. I treat people who have fallen through the cracks in our system. What's frustrating to me is that so many of these crises could be prevented if we actually looked at underlying root causes of the issues, things like homelessness, addictions, untreated mental illness. Recently, in the ER, I saw a 14-year-old boy. He was there for a mental health crisis, was not safe to go home, and he languished in our ER in a windowless room, no exercise, no real treatment, in paper scrubs for almost three weeks, 14-year-old boy because there was nowhere for him to go. That's unacceptable. I'm running because I'm sick of putting Band-Aids on a system that doesn't work when what we need are real solutions. When I see a problem, I act, and when I act, I move the dial on a systems level. This is the approach we need with the pressing issues facing the county, and those are my priorities: homelessness, mental health care, and public safety. Thank you so much.
Amanda Schrader, running in District 4. Please tell us a little bit about yourself and why you're running and best suited for the job.
Well, when I saw this question, it made me very hopeful, actually. What is -- what do you think the most critical role or responsibility the county has? And this is a role that I've taken my entire life, and that is that of a caregiver. We are responsible for the people who live within the confines of the county, and my number-one priority is Health and Human Services. And I have sat on my Human Rights Committee for my union at a national level for the last six years, done a lot of work on policy and work regarding domestic violence, ending domestic violence, domestic violence advocacy, also with breast cancer. It's Breast Cancer Awareness Month. I'm a breast cancer survivor, so I've been very, very involved in that fight. And here stateside in Oregon, I've been involved in legislation with regards to the Healthy Teen Relationship Act and with establishing the Oregon Women Veterans Coordinator so we can find those who are lost and help them get the services to which they're entitled.
Thank you. Lori, tell us a little bit about yourself and why you are the best person for District 4.
Thank you for the question. The most critical role of the county is to be a safety net for our most vulnerable citizens. Many of those folks live in extreme poverty, and when you delve down deeper, you'll find that communities of color experience poverty at a greater rate and depth than others. I grew up in the Rockwood Neighborhood of Gresham, where I've been a successful small business owner for the last 18 years. Rockwood is one of the most impoverished neighborhoods in the state of Oregon. I know a little bit about poverty. There were times when our families struggled. I remember the days of government cheese and when food stamps were actually stamps. My dad only had a sixth-grade education, yet he was one of the smartest men I have ever known. He taught me that education was a pathway out of poverty, and although it took me about 11 years to earn my four-year degree, I did it, one night class after another. I'm proud of my six years of community service as a Gresham City Councilor and Redevelopment Commissioner, my 14 years as a seropnotist, working to improve the lives of women and girls, my countless volunteer hours serving on committees and task forces. All of these experiences have prepared me well to serve as your next East County Commissioner.
Great, thank you so much. Let's get into the issues. You'll have two minutes for this question. Five years ago, this organization, the City Club of Portland, released an in-depth report looking at Multnomah County's mental health system, and it concluded that the county's mental health system was incredibly flawed. The report questioned the ability of the county to provide mental health services, it cited a lack of financial transparency, and it suggested a total restructuring. Do you think that Multnomah County has made the changes needed to ensure that our county health system is providing quality care to the tens of thousands of people it serves every year? What changes would you like to see moving forward? We'll start with you.
Great, thank you. Some of those changes, some of those changes. One of the most recent changes that we've made is including our mental health services inside of our Health Department, and that's an important recognition, that mental health is health, and that is something that, you know, our Department of Health Director is here today, that's something I think she can champion. Our Board has been supportive, and as a Chief of Staff of the county, I was very supportive. Secondly, a couple of years ago, this idea of a Unity Behavioral Health Center rose up, and initially, the county was only looking at putting $1 million to that. But I told the Commissioner that I worked for, this was the first thing I had seen in a long time, that I thought the dial could actually move. And with the help of other Commissioners and with my work on the Board staff, we allocated $3 million to that project to get that up and running, so that police and ambulances have somewhere to go besides the ER and jail when someone is in crisis. That is tremendously important. Some other important factors that I would like to make sure are included at every one of our school-based health centers. I want not just physical and dental health, but I want mental health in every one of our school-based health centers, because if we can do anything to make families more stable through our school-based health centers, it's keeping kids in the classroom, and today's kids need all three of those types of health. Lastly, the reason that I have a shelter-all policy, and the reason I want to shelter everybody in our community, is that I don't think that we can even start on the path toward mental health care, toward addictions care and treatment, if folks are living on different sidewalks every single night. And so that is why we have to have a shelter-everyone policy, so that we can get them into our new system, into the services that this county has invested in to provide better mental health treatment within our community. Thank you.
Sharon, talk to us about your thoughts on this for District 1 and for the broader community mental health.
Well, how long is the --
Two minutes.
So, this is actually one of the areas I am most passionate about and why I am running for this position. It's my depth of experience in this area, my advocacy, and my work with people suffering from mental illness. So I do want to point out that with the shelter-everyone policy, there is -- there are a number of people who are suffering from severe persistent mental illness, who do not want to be in shelters, are scared to be in shelters, and our approach to them may need to be different. There's some pilot projects that are wonderful with intensive outreach teams that go out, meet people where they're at, and connect with them, forge relationships, so that they can transition into shelters when they are ready and those shelters are the right places. But I have been actively involved in, Eric mentioned, the Unity Behavioral Health Center. This is the potential for a paradigm shift in how we treat people with mental health crises. I think that the county has been woefully behind, but the rest of the country has too, in how we treat people with mental illness. I wrote an op-ed about this in the Oregonian years ago, and I was contacted by the woman, Chris Ferentinos, who was envisioning the Unity Behavioral Health Center. We began to collaborate, and I went down with leadership to see the model in Alameda County of what this could look like, where we could treat people in crises effectively and humanely by adopting a different approach. I came back here and advocated to everyone I know, peer groups, those with lived experience of mental illness, our local and federal legislators. And so I have worked on this from the beginning. I'm on the Advisory Board for the center, and my depth of experience, my relationships in this community are what I will bring to move this forward.
Thank you. Let's move to our candidates from District 4. Amanda Schrader, can you talk to us about mental health?
I think it's really important to look at the paths that we all walk and recognize that we're all looking at them through different lenses, and those who struggle with mental health issues, their lens is quite different from most of ours, and trying to find the correct path for them has been something that -- I work specifically with veterans, and it's something that I have been doing for the last 11 years of my life. The reason I went to work for the VA, which is where I work now, is because I saw so many of my sisters and brothers-at-arms from coming back from Iraq and Afghanistan, coming back broken, and I knew that there was something, somewhere deep in there that needed to be fixed, and so I went to work for the VA so that I could help people on a daily basis navigate that incredibly bureaucratic system that's been established by the federal government so that they could receive their benefits. And this is something that I would do as Multnomah County Commissioners. I can continue to advocate for all of those, even if they aren't my sisters-and-brothers-at-arms, but all of my sisters and brothers in general, to help them receive the care that they need. And I agree that all of our clinics and our schools need to have mental health care as well, but we don't have a lot of clinics and schools in East Counties, so we're going to have to amp that up a bit and make sure that all of our people of Multnomah County are taken care of.
Thank you. Lori, you're wrapping us up on evaluating, understanding the role of mental health and the county commission and the restructuring that's needed and was recommended by the City Club.
All right, thank you. So yes, first of all, I think we need to remove the stigma that sometimes comes attached with mental health. To me, mental health is the same if you have a broken arm or a broken leg, and that you should have access to services, just like we do with urgent care. You can walk in and get treated. Why can't we treat people for mental illness and crisis? That would be one thing, but of course, we have to have the funding. So as part of our legislative agenda for Multnomah County, once I'm elected, one thing that I'll continue to push for is for funding for our Health Department, and specifically for mental health. I sit on the Mental Health Department, the CBAC, that advises the commission for the budget, so I'm helping to direct more of those funds for mental health. In Gresham, we've done some really intuitive, kind of makes sense. We have something called the CARES Program. These are nurses from OHSU that are interns that go out with our firefighters. We know that many folks, for various reasons, abuse the 911 system. This is costly, it's ineffective, and it's not giving people the treatment that they need. These nurses are able to stay with these patients and talk to them and see what are their specific needs, and more times than not, it does revolve around a mental health issue. So I think just by approaching things in a new and different way with better, more effective models is hugely important. The other things we do is that we contract with JOIN. We have a social service provider who goes out with our police force, so we can connect people that are experiencing homelessness with the services they need, with LifeWorks and other good mental health providers. So those would be all the important things, and of course, the Unity Health Center is going to be, hopefully, a national model. All eyes are on us right now. We have an amazing opportunity to change the way that mental health is delivered more cost-effectively, more humanely, and more appropriately.
Thank you. We're going to flip the order and start with our friends and candidates in District 4 on this one. You'll each have one and a half minutes to answer this question. On criminal justice, last year, Multnomah County received a MacArthur Foundation Safety and Justice Challenge Grant, and a report from that project was released earlier this year that showed deep racial disparities in Multnomah County's adult criminal justice system, from initial contact with police, through arrest, prosecution, sentencing, and parole and probation violations. Even though Black people are no more likely than white people to commit crime, and I'll say that again, even though Black people are no more likely than white people to commit crime, in Multnomah County, our Black residents are six times more likely than whites to be in jail, they are 4.2 times more likely than whites to be referred to the district attorney's office for a case review, and they are 4.4 times more likely to be convicted of an offense than a white person in our county. What would you do as Multnomah County Commissioner to address these deep disparities in our county-level criminal justice system? We'll start with Lori, District 4.
Thank you so much. This is just completely unacceptable. I have seen those reports and the fact that African-American folks have to worry about their children when they go out at night, if their child is going to come home. I was talking to Apostle Holt, who works out in the Rockwood Neighborhood, and he was telling me the story that I got the call. And he talked about being at a party, it was a birthday party, and his son called him, and his son had gotten pulled over by the police. And everything was fine, but how horrifying it would be to have to live your life in fear that you might get pulled over because your taillight is out. We have to look at, why are we pulling people over for taillights? There could be some really basic things about, we've got a lot of technology that people could take down license plates, you could be sent a ticket, so we really have to look at the whole way that our criminal justice system works. In Gresham, we're doing something called courageous conversations. We're having our Gresham Police Department meet with many families who've had loved ones that have been killed or even hurt, and I think that until we really have what I call courageous conversations, we have to create those spaces where people can really understand. Questions were asked in those meetings, like, "How much training does the Gresham Police Department get on racial disparity?" And so we were able to really delve down and have a safe place to share our thoughts and our concerns, and until we can really all come together as a community and work on this problem together, I think that we've got a long ways to go, and I look forward to being part of that solution.
Amanda Schrader, can you talk a little bit about the disparities in the Multnomah County criminal justice system and what you would do to address it from District 4?
I have to tell you, I love the term courageous conversations. It's one that we've used in the labor movement for a very, very long time when addressing issues that are uncomfortable for members, uncomfortable for management, uncomfortable for people in general. And it's in those conversations that one can find hope and find a common ground. What do I intend to do about racial disparity in Multnomah County that's asking me to solve white privilege in a manner of 90 seconds, but hold a lot of those courageous conversations, look at statistics. Kupana talked about evictions, that people of color were more likely to be evicted than white people for similar infractions. I think that we need to document, document, document. The criminal justice system is, when somebody's doing the wrong thing, just like I tell my kids every day, it's our responsibility to be stewards of our neighbors of this planet, and if you see somebody doing the wrong thing, I ask you to say something. Put them on notice that you're recognizing that their behavior might be going in a way that's unsafe for people, and that's pretty much it.
If you're just tuning in on OPB, you're listening to the City Club of Portland's Friday Forum. I'm Kupana Krishnamurthy, and I'm the Senior Policy Director at Forward Together. I'm here with four candidates for Multnomah County Commission. Sharon Myron and Eric Zimmerman, running for District 1 seat, and Amanda Schrader and Lori Stegman, running for the District 4 seat. You've just heard from District 4 candidates about their perspectives on the criminal justice system. We'll move on and have Sharon with one and a half minutes.
So, the first step in this process is to admit that we have a problem with systemic racism in our county, in our community. I was a member of the COAB, some of you may have heard of it. It's the Community Oversight Advisory Board, looking at police use of force against people with mental health crises, but of course, this had to broaden to the discussion of use of force against people of color, particularly African-Americans. And the deep anger and the sense that there is not an admission, that there's not an acceptance of responsibility for this was so profound to me. We need to actually have meaningful conversations. We need to admit this exists and engage people who are affected. I feel that we need very early intervention so that people don't end up in the criminal justice system, and that's starting, I mean, that's prenatal is when that starts, but mentoring programs in schools, parenting support in schools for those who are most affected. We need to partner with the sheriff, who currently has a vision of addressing this, and most importantly, like I said, we need to listen, and I think we don't do enough of that, so that's what I would do.
Eric Zimmerman, you'll wrap us up on criminal justice and the deep disparities in the Multnomah County area.
Yes, thank you. I mean, let us be clear. It is our mission for those of us who have a seat at the table of power, at the seat that designs the system, to pull another seat out for other people to sit at that table and help us fix this internally, externally. It is not a time for us to pass ideas down to the community, but it's a time for us to ask the community to step forward with us. I am very serious about the work that is being done right now with our Assistant DAs to start taking drug offenses that today are a felony offense and moving them to be a misdemeanor. We know there is a 30-or-more-year history of those offenses being designed to arrest and convict minorities, to arrest and convict our Black community. At Multnomah County, we have to change how we treat people of different colors in our jails, because use of force is used too often against minorities in our jails. We have to also find a way at Multnomah County for the transparency, ultimate transparency, to be the way that we do business in the criminal justice system. Body cameras need to be a part of the way that we do work at Multnomah County. That is not something we can negotiate on, and I commit to take every single vote in the open and allow the community to have its say on these issues. This is a much longer answer than a minute 30, but this is a very serious concern for me, and I am pulling that seat out at the table, and I want the community involved.
I'm going to ask a follow-up question, because the summer, the Multnomah County Charter Review Committee referred to voters, a charter amendment that would have the county sheriff appointed rather than elected. Do you support this change, and what challenges and opportunities would that change create for building a better criminal justice system? This is a lightning round, so you only get a minute, and we're going to start with Sharon.
So, I support an appointed sheriff. I think there's pros and cons of both sides of this argument, to be honest, but, and I don't think it should be tied to a single individual sheriff. However, with our last sheriff, we did see what happens when there isn't the kind of accountability, when it's an elected office, and a sheriff who is doing significant damage in just the areas we're talking about was left because we had to wait until there was an election before he would either be recalled or unless he would resign. That's time we're wasting resources, we're not making the changes that need to happen, and I think that we need to be able to move forward quickly. So that's why I support an appointed position.
Eric Zimmerman in District 1, how do you feel about, do you support the change for the county sheriff to be appointed rather than elected, and what opportunities does that provide?
I do not support the change. I think that our sheriff should be elected. I don't believe that in a moment of crisis, you change your form of government and take a choice away from voters. I believe that an elective sheriff was held accountable. I believe that we have the right person in today, and I think that overall, we have to find a way where the Multnomah County Sheriff can serve this entire community, and taking choice away from voters is the wrong avenue. I look at the city of Portland and how the revolving door that exists of police chiefs, that is not the type of leadership that I want to see at Multnomah County, and I'm afraid that if politicians appoint sheriffs, that we will just have another police chief situation, and that's not the right system.
Let's move to hearing from candidates Amanda Schrader and Lori Stegman in District 4 on the question of a county sheriff who is appointed rather than elected, and your thoughts and opinions. We'll start with you, Amanda.
I am absolutely for maintaining the system as it is. People need to have the right to elect their sheriff, and I think that, as Eric put it out, politicians appointing out, politicians appointing a sheriff lends to it becoming a more corrupt system. And I'm not saying that any of the commissioners are corrupt, there's no allegation of that. I'm just saying that in the future, if we make that change and we take the voice away from the people, that's one more thing that disempowers the people. Also, the Multnomah County Charter puts essentially absolute power in the hands of the chair. And so if the sheriff is appointed, that puts a lot of money, a lot of money, the majority of all of Multnomah County tax base into the discretion of the Chair of Multnomah County. The commissioners that are not the chairs serve as advisors and participate, but at some point in time, the Charter would allow the chair to take that power away. So, elected.
Thank you. We'll hear last from Lori Stegman in District Four on the question of the county sheriff and the voter charter amendment about appointing versus electing.
Thank you for the question. So, I'm torn. Just because the sheriff is elected or appointed is no guarantee of the success of that individual. However, I do think that there's some opportunities for us to learn from some of our past mistakes. I think that there could be more accountability in the sheriff's office through more and frequent audits and through the budgeting process. So I think it's incredibly important, in East County, our sheriff's department oversees Corbett, Troutdale, and Wood Village. And I would not be in favor of taking those cities' privilege of voting for who their sheriff is. So I would prefer that we stay with an elected sheriff.
Thank you to all of the candidates. Let's move on to housing and homelessness. You'll each have two minutes to answer this question. On any given night in Portland, 4,000 people sleep on our streets or in shelters. For years, services for the homeless were split between the city and the county. And earlier this year, the city of Portland and Multnomah County created and funded a new joint office that's based at the county, focusing on ending homelessness. This $30 million office will provide short-term rent aid to vulnerable people, oversee efforts to move people out of shelters and into permanent housing, and increase the capacity of Portland Area shelters. What does this new joint office out of Multnomah County need to do in order to move the needle on our homelessness crisis? And as a county commissioner, how will you be evaluating the success of this new effort? Eric Zimmerman in District One, we'll start with you.
I think the best thing that we can do to beef up this program, a home for everyone in the joint office, is to commit to shelter everyone who is sleeping on our streets today. We haven't done that. And I do not believe that the other money that we are investing in this program is being as well-spent, as efficient, or being used for everyone. We committed to only 650 new beds, but if we're talking nearly 2,000 who sleep on the street every single night, then that leaves us a tremendous delta. So what are we going to do? I think that having our social workers go from one sidewalk to the next, trying to establish relationships, trying to get people into housing assistance, into mental health treatment, into addictions treatment, without a roof over their head is a tremendously more difficult job than it would be if we knew every night where everybody slept. We're doing good work. The commitment is there. We disagree in some areas about the path forward, but I think everybody on this issue is committed to ending homelessness. And I believe that transitional housing and supportive housing starts with a roof over your head and a shelter. On the other side of that, our work for anti-poverty work, the stuff we do to keep people in their homes when they face crisis, is tremendously effective in terms of rent increases or bills that come up unexpectedly that keep people from falling into homelessness. We cannot give up on that. And when you go to your ballots this weekend, or this month, make sure you also pass the Affordable Housing Bond, and make sure that we have money that is dedicated to increasing our inventory overall. This is a tremendous step, an important step, that we talk about it from one end of the continuum to the next. This is not something that has a silver bullet, but the overall continuum. But we have to commit to getting people off the streets. We have the resources to do it, and this community has the will and the values to do it, and it's time for us to step up.
Sharon Myron in District One also, can you talk a little bit about your perspective on homelessness and the county's new joint efforts, and how you would be evaluating the success of those efforts moving forward?
Yes. So, I think that finally, we are starting on the right path to address the issue of homelessness, the spectrum of homelessness and lack of housing in our community. The Home for Everyone program takes a holistic approach. It's what I talked about earlier, looking at root causes, best practices, so we can have an approach that addresses the underlying issues with the goal, the stated goal of having everyone in permanent, stable housing. So he looks at prevention, so that people don't end up on the streets in the first place, and there are a number of mechanisms to do that. We absolutely need emergency shelter. And the way that we should do that is looking at it as transitional, is very creatively. What facilities do we have at the county that we could convert in a quick and cost-effective manner to get people off the streets as soon as possible? And we are starting that process. But ultimately, the goal is permanent, stable housing for those with mental health needs, with disabilities, for the elderly. We need support, we need wraparound services in many instances, and Central City Concern is a model for that. But I think this is an area where my opponent and I do differ. We need to balance and look at the root causes and broader picture, is in my idea, and not do the Band-Aids. He talks about the shelter beds, which we need, but we can do cost-effectively. Talks about jail beds, same with ER beds. These are often the end state, they're the most expensive, least effective way to deal with underlying problems. And we need to start focusing long-term on the underlying issues.
Thank you. We'll move to our candidates in District Four, talking about housing and homelessness, the new joint efforts, and your evaluation of what success will look like. We'll start with you, Lori.
So, I'm really happy and pleased that Multnomah County and the city of Portland have finally joined their offices to address homelessness. As you know, it used to be that the county dealt with families, and the city of Portland dealt with single individuals. So that makes a tremendous amount of sense to me. The Home for Everyone Coalition, as a Gresham City Councilor, our council is a member of that coalition. So I think that's a great partnership with the city of Portland, the city of Gresham, Home Forward. And what I think is really important is they've taken a three-pronged approach. Prevention, to prevent people from becoming homeless in the first place, which we don't talk about very much. Also, permanent housing with wraparound services. And then, lastly, emergency shelter. And I think that we have to address all three of those. And it's not just a one-size-fits-all, and so I'm proud of the work that that coalition has done. In fact, in 2015, we sheltered every homeless veteran that asked for housing. I think that's a remarkable accomplishment. I also think that we could sell either non-essential properties or lease them. If we're not using them, we could use the income stream from those properties to fund homeless initiatives. As a Gresham City Councilor, I also sit on the Gresham Homeless Action Team, which informed the point-in-time count that we did. And for the first time, East County was able to count how many homeless folks lived in our community. And that was really important and significant, because when we look at those numbers, that's what enables us to get federal and state funding. So I think just common sense approaches like that will go a long ways, and I look forward to continuing that work.
Thank you. I'm looking to Colin just a second. All right. Let's move on to transportation. Oh, no, let's not move on to transportation. Let's wait on transportation. Sorry, Amanda, please give us your thoughts on homelessness.
To be perfectly honest, the answers that I've heard from all of the candidates gives me great hope. It gives me great hope, because I know a lot of veterans coming from my line of work are homeless, and they can't be inside. They can't, you know, they just will never be inside. And recognizing that as being a challenge, but how do we get them their services when they're still outside? That's something that we're going to be looking at with a lot of people. And I think that what's most important right now is that we, winter is coming, we need to get emergency shelters open so that we can put roofs over the heads of the people who will come inside. We need to make sure that every allocated county building that we have is available to house people, to keep them away from the dangers of outside. But to me, what's really, really important, besides caring for these most vulnerable people by providing them services, is prevention. And I think that we need to enact a Tenants Bill of Rights, we need to have rent stabilization, and we need to ensure that no cause evictions are documented, 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 because I do think that they unfairly target our most vulnerable, our most marginalized. And I think it's critical that we have these conversations where we talk about, these are the things that are going on, and this is what we can do right now, emergency shelter, get the rooms open. And then talk about how we're going to make sure that kids stay in the same house or the same area, so they go to the same school for a year. Because education continuity is critical for success and remaining in school. So I will commit to doing everything that I can, including going out with those social workers and having conversations with people to find out what they need so that they are safe right now.
Thank you. If you're just tuning into OPB, you're listening to the City Club of Portland's Friday Forum. I'm Kupana Krishna Murthy, the Senior Policy Director at Forward Together, and I'm here with the four candidates for Multnomah County Commission, Sharon Myron and Eric Zimmerman, running for District One, and Amanda Schrader and Lori Stegman, running for the District Four seat. We're going to move on to talk about transportation. I'm only going to give you a minute on this one. It's interesting. Public transportation, street quality and sidewalks, all play a significant role in our county's livability, and yet the county commission has almost nothing to do with any of that. The county commission has a narrow responsibility when it comes to transportation, with a heavy focus on bridge and road maintenance. What role do you think the Multnomah County needs to play, either directly or in partnership with other local governments, to improve our transportation ecosystem? We're going to start with our friends in East County, who I'm sure have a lot of things to say about this. We'll start with you, Amanda, one minute.
So, I did, I recognized for a long time, actually, the streets, lack of streetlights, lack of sidewalks out in East County has really kind of spurred me into getting a voice at the table. A couple of weeks ago, I did nothing but public transit for two weeks. And I live off of 165th and Powell, and I can tell you, if you are a parent, you cannot be involved in any of your kids' activities. I missed two open houses, a Taekwondo belt ceremony, soccer games. And that really makes me concerned about the implications of people who are transit-dependent on their children's future success. But with regards to public transit, I want to see north and south running buses, so people can work where they live and live where they work. I want to see buses that run more hours, I want to ensure the safety of our drivers of the bus, and the people out there who have to take the bus, because it's not easy catching the bus to get downtown. My tour of duty starts at seven, I was on a bus at 5:50 in the morning, got home at nine o'clock at night. I feel for all of the people who are transit-dependent.
Lori, in District Four, your thoughts on transportation and the role that the county plays, which is relatively focused and narrow, and also thoughts on partnerships?
Yes, well, I currently sit on the Powell Division Steering Corridor Committee as a Gresham City Councilor, and once I take office, I look forward to hopefully serving as a representative for Multnomah County Commission as well. So as many of you know, because of gentrification, lots of folks have been pushed east, and we need to have better public transportation from downtown out to East County and back. So I look forward to serving in that capacity. I also would focus more on safe routes to school. I had the opportunity to go on a Metro policy bicycle ride, and so we were riding, and where you have bike lanes, I felt relatively safe, but you'd run out of bike lanes, and it's very, very different. I'm not an avid bicyclist, but I did get a completely different perspective, and I appreciate those folks that can and do use bicycles as their main mode of transportation. But I think we also have to look at everything as a whole. Our transportation system is, it's degrading, and we don't have the appropriate funding. So I think where I can help is through our legislative agenda, working with Multnomah County, working with our legislature, as well as, you know, the bigger, broader picture is the gas tax, and this is all above my pay grade, but I want to be a good partner.
Thank you. Let's hear from our candidates, Eric Zimmerman and Sharon Myron in District One, on transportation. We'll start with you, Eric.
Amanda and Lori have said some great things about public transportation, and I can't take anything away from that. I am proud of my history at Multnomah County, working with the East County District to get safe routes to school projects passed, to get rapid flashing crossings for students after we saw tragedy at nearby schools in East County. I want to deliver those same type of projects in West County where I live, where I'm running to represent. I also want to transition a little bit to, my time previously as a platoon leader and a commanding officer in our army makes me immediately also think about emergency preparedness. And when I think about the bridges across the Alamo, we are just about 95% done with the Sellwood Bridge. Our next project will be the Burnside Bridge. And that resiliency, we are undertaking that report right now. Can we rebuild it? Can we restructure it? What can we do to make that lifeline withstand emergency situations as they're on their way to us? So my eye goes to that as well. But it's important in the most urban areas where Sharon and I are competing to represent, that we also look at alternatives to just car transportation. Cars are a part of our everyday life, but alternative modes of transportation is how this city is growing, and as a commissioner, I'll be supporting finding innovative ways to bring Portland to the 21st century in transportation.
We'll wrap up with Sharon. You've got one minute to talk about public transportation and the role of the county.
Well, I think, given what we talked about earlier, the mission of the county, which is taking care of those who are most vulnerable and in need, there is a direct role here to be involved in the transportation conversation at every level. Transportation ties into our public health, livability of our neighborhoods, people being able to get to or from work, and it has a significant environmental impact. And also is a significant equity issue. When we're talking about equity, this comes into play so strongly. So what I appreciate, looking at the Sellwood Bridge project, for example, it's a little over budget, that would have to be addressed, but it was a model in terms of the collaboration used to get there and meeting equity goals with the number of minority contractors, women contractors, contractors and others who were involved in that project. That's what we need to do and expand more broadly.
Speaking of equity, Multnomah County has grown significantly. And between 2000 and 2010, the county grew by 11%, nearly 75,000 people. Communities of color are a larger part of Multnomah County's population than we are in the rest of the state. We see rapidly growing populations of Black, Latino, and Asian Pacific Islander populations, especially in both East and West Multnomah County. A few years ago, Multnomah County created an Office of Diversity and Equity to serve as a hub for the county's diversity and equity initiatives. What continuing role do you envision for the Office of Diversity and Equity? And what would you do as a county commissioner to ensure that the county is serving our diverse populations equitably? We're going to start with Sharon, and you've got two minutes on this.
Okay, so, I believe that the Office of Diversity and Equity will play a substantial role, and even more of a role, moving forward, and I would like to be a part of that process. I have already met with the director a couple of times about some of the opportunities that are there, and I would have a continuing conversation and relationship with him. But in addition, we need to look to modeling behaviors at the county in our projects, for example, like I mentioned with the Sellwood Bridge, and setting standards to have people from communities of color involved in all of the work that we're doing at the county, whatever the county touches. And like I say, kind of over and over, we need to engage, we need to convene groups where we bring people from these communities together and say, what is say, what is it that you need from us? Here's what the county does. How can we most effectively serve you, and how can you play an active role in what we're doing? I think that too often, we tend to come up with policies from on high and push them on people, which is what I see, like I said, working in the ER. We get these policies, and they impact people in the real world, but the politicians don't really get how that works sometimes. So I see having the perspective of people from these communities being actively involved as an essential component to whatever we do.
Thank you. Eric Zimmerman in District One, your thoughts on the role of the Office of Equity and Inclusion at Multnomah County, and the ideas and processes for moving forward?
Great, thank you. As the county, over the next several years, we're shifting continually to our service model being culturally specific in its delivery. One of the things that I think our Office of Diversity and Equity, and there are actually employees of that office here today, one of the things that I think they can help us with is to better make that work. Change does not come without its bumps in the road, and we've experienced those at Multnomah County as we've changed how we deliver services to specific communities where they're at, in a manner where they can engage with us and we can engage with them. And I think we're serving the community better, but it is not a mission accomplished yet. I also think that ODE, as we call it in the building at Multnomah County, ODE can help us also evolve into being a 21st century employer. If we've had changes in our demographics in Multnomah County in our population, I want to know why that hasn't happened in our workforce. I believe that we can change the way that we recruit at Multnomah County, the way that we bring folks into family wage jobs. The importance of that is because then we'll be able to deliver on our services in a better manner, because we're talking with employees who represent our community, and I think that inherently makes us better at what we do. I also sit on the executive team for our courthouse, for our new Health Department Headquarters Building, for our East County Public Safety Building. And the lessons that we've learned and the strategies about MWEASB contracting and labor is important, as we look at nearly $500 million of new capital funds coming into this arena. My goal as a Commissioner will be able to keep those jobs and that money invested locally with family wage jobs, with aspirational apprenticeships and journey status for our entire MWEAS community, and change the way we do public projects in Multnomah County.
Let's hear from the candidates in District Four, where the change in population in this district is intense and incredible, and a real opportunity for us to do our work in a different way in Multnomah County. Can you give us your thoughts and opinions on the Office of Diversity and Inclusion, the role it plays, and how the county can serve all its communities equitably? We're going to start with Amanda, two minutes.
Thank you. Whenever I hear about resources and the fact that I'll be a decision-maker at a table where we get to deploy people out to make lives better, just a very definitive, this is what this group of people, their mission is to make lives better, to connect people, to bridge disconnects, is very exciting to me. And living in East County, where we have so many people who have moved out there and who are so disconnected right now from anything, really, kind of reeling from having to move, the opportunity of bringing a group of people in who are hired, you know, who are part of the government, who will sit and have a conversation with them to help them establish roots in their new community, and help the community around them appreciate and better understand them, I think, is really critical. So I'd like to put this group of people to work out in East County right now.
Lori Stegman.
Thank you. So I heard a saying that I think that diversity and equity, what the role of that office should be, is that being invited to the party is one thing, but being asked to dance is another. And so I think that we need to invite people to the table. In Rockwood, we have over 80 languages spoken. I understand what it's like to be a minority in what will soon be a majority-minority community. We have to meet people where they are, and not only meet them, but invite them to the table, and make sure that they have a voice. The other thing that I'm very happy about is the Rockwood Rising redevelopment. This is an urban renewal area in Gresham, and we're going to have a presence from Mount Hood Community College, the Small Business Development Center, the Employment Office, as well as we are going to make up the components of a grocery store. There's also going to be a community plaza. So this is really, I think, the role of government is to provide the infrastructure, to meet people where they are. I want to thank the county. Chair Deborah Cifori's office has done some amazing work. We have something called East County Cares. We have several people that, under this current county commission leadership, has recognized the needs in East County, including Commissioner McKeel, who's been a strong advocate, and made sure that not only did we have resources, but we had the personnel to back that up. So we also have an interfaith coordinator. So I think the role is to create a space for everybody to come together and for their voices to be heard.
Thank you. We're going to move into our final question, and I'll ask you to wrap in final thoughts about your candidacy into this question. But I'm a super library nerd. I can remember the name of every librarian I've ever had. Multnomah County Library System is one of the jewels in the crown of the library systems across America. It serves over one in five people in the state. It ranks second among US libraries based on circulation of books and materials, and it is the busiest library system of its size in the country. Go book nerds! But, more than just books, Multnomah County Library plays a super important role in providing free internet access, in providing classes, a safe place to do homework, and many other kinds of services. In the past every three to five years, the library has gone directly to voters with a bond measure that usually passes, but the most recent one that passed in November 2012 provides permanent dedicated library funding in our assessed taxes. What are your plans to improve and ensure ongoing library services and access, and how should the county measure success and somehow pivot to a closing statement? One and a half minutes. Yeah, yeah, yep, yep, yep. It's a tall order, but our libraries are amazing, so you should be able to do that. So, you have a minute and a half, each of you. We will start with, let's start with Sharon, in District One.
All right. So, I do agree with, the library system is so incredibly important, and I've heard it described as our community's living room, and what you've described. One of the things that I think is so essential and incredible about the innovative approaches we're taking in our library system here, is bringing social services to the library, meeting people where they're at, because so often, people who are homeless don't have a place to go, will go to the library. It's like, also, people always end up in the emergency department. Meet people where they're at to be able to support them, connect them to services. So that's an innovative approach that the county deals with. And transitioning to closing in my minute and a half, Multnomah County is, you know, one of the largest public health care providers in the state, and yet, no one on the board has experience in healthcare. Given the interconnectedness of everything the county does, public health, homelessness, mental health services, public safety, having the background of working in this system deeply and at the system's level, and seeing how policies impact people in the real world, will be extremely beneficial to have on the board. Thank you for being here and for taking the time, and I would love to discuss this in a lot more depth later.
See, I knew they could do it. All right, Eric, libraries and closing statements.
The office that I work for today, we staff the Library Advisory Board, and I think that us moving to a dedicated set of funds for the library has been one of the best changes in our community, so we have a safe and healthy library. The best thing we can do as commissioners is to make sure that we don't overspend, that we find a way to invest in capital and programs that keep us within that, so we don't have to go back to voters to change that rate. I am proud of the service I have in the public. I'm proud of my public service at Multnomah County and in the military. I am proud of having worked on anti-trafficking measures, economic development to bring family wage jobs to Oregon and to Portland, expanding the minimum wage at Multnomah County to $15 an hour, bringing, working to bring family-paid leave for new moms and dads when they have a birth in the family, summer works that Commissioner Loretta Smith, who's sitting over here and has endorsed me, working to expand that to over a thousand underprivileged youth who have today internships that are paid and in public service. I'm not done working to make Multnomah County work for everyone, and I think that's exactly why Governor Barbara Roberts has endorsed me, AfSME, our county employees have endorsed me, Commissioners McKeel and Smith have endorsed me, the Sierra Club, our equal rights community, our business community, and our public safety community. Because I have a vision for stable families, I envision shelter for all. I envision culturally-specific services in health, and in addition to visions, I actually have plans and the experience to deliver. So I want to make Multnomah County work for everyone. I thank you, and I sincerely hope I've earned your vote today.
Thank you. Let's hear libraries and closing statements from our District Four candidates, Lori Stegman and Amanda Schrader. We'll start with Lori.
Well, thank you. On libraries quickly, in Rockwood, we have one of the most-used libraries probably in the entire system. Unfortunately, there's a two-hour wait to get on the internet, so I would look forward to finding ways to provide or remove that digital divide that currently exists. And transitioning to my closing statement, when I take office, Jessica Vega Peterson and I will be the fifth and sixth people of color to serve on the Multnomah County Commission in 162 years. I will be the first Asian American ever to serve. That is a major milestone, and is long overdue. I believe that public officials should reflect the complexion of the community, and that is why the whole of this commission may be greater than the sum of its parts. For the first time in history, we will have a majority-minority commission. I'm proud of the amazing endorsements I've received from my own mayor of Gresham, Shane Bemis, to my entire council, Portland Mayor-elect Ted Willer, and Multnomah County Chair Deborah Cifori, to Commissioner Loretta Smith, and especially Commissioner Diane McKeel. Having the confidence of these incredible leaders has been a humbling experience. Their support shows trust and confidence that I am the best person for the job, and I plan to hit the ground running. My experience and my ability to build consensus, trust, and partnerships are what will enable me to be an effective leader for Multnomah County. Thank you.
Thank you. Our last question about libraries and a closing statement from candidate Amanda Schrader in District Four.
What a great, great thing to talk about, our libraries, because libraries are a place that everybody has an equal playing field. You go in there with your dreams and some dedication, spend a couple of hours, many hours, some of us, because a lot of us, that's the only safe place we can go, and we improve ourselves. And that is what I am trying to do. I'm trying to help everybody improve themselves to reach their absolute most and highest potential, and I think that I can do that for Multnomah County. I have incredible background experience in working with people and lifting them up from where they are to, for where they've been to where they are. I've worked on several pieces of legislation that have improved people's lives and worked at a national level. I was particularly invested in the Violence Against Women Act. And I think that, given the opportunity, given that moment, I'll be able to extend my reach and help a lot more people, not just the people of East County, but all of Multnomah County. And our library system completely rocks, I know this. So I'm very grateful that all of you sat here today. You showed up, and showing up is really important. Please show up on November 8th, which I know you all will, and please vote for me. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'll turn it back over to the City Club.
Thank you to the four of you for being here today. We're past broadcast time, and so have to stop, but I'm sure the candidates will hang around for any additional questions. Special thank you to Melissa Magagna and Colin Jones of the Friday Forum Committee for planning this debate today. And I'm Courtney Nelson, your president of your City Club, and thanks for being here today. We're adjourned.